All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is 6 o'clock PM. This is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-C United School Board. Tonight is Monday, August 13th, 2018, and we are located at the TCU High School Band Room. Roll call finds all present. Next, we have our administrative report.
Yeah. Obviously, lots going on with the start of school right around the corner. Reminder to everyone, we do have new teacher workshop this week, starts tomorrow. Very excited about that. Next week, we have all of our staff back together, Monday through Thursday, and the following Monday and the 27th, bringing in our students to start the year. So, exciting times. I'll hit some highlights here, here within TCU Montgomery. A little overview of summer school, had 23 students in grades four through eight, and about 20 students in grades K through three, attending all of the days of it, which was wonderful. In developing structures, systems, and a culture of excellence, one of the things that we had a team of educators who went to a mindfulness training this summer, and kind of about bringing about some social emotional ideas, self-regulation, mindfulness, breathing, those kinds of things that a lot of schools have seen some really phenomenal results from, and then some things with yoga. And so, I think all of us could use a little deep breath now and then, so that's always good. TCU La Center, and really, this fits with our other sites as well, really digging into the implementation, application of Avid and personalized learning. Pretty excited about where Avid took us in the first year, and the Summer Institute, and where it's going to take us in the future. Some deeper and better's kind of our theme this year, and a lot of deep work with Blooms and Costas, which is about higher level questioning and rigorous dialogue. Some other things that kind of fits with TCU Montgomery's piece here, within TCU La Center, their staff's going to be reading Habits of Mind, which is by Arthur Costas, but again, it's about deeper thinking, and it's about cognitive coaching types of things that we've implemented in our district across the way. Within the business office, we've got the audit field work dates, September 24th, that's about three to five days, and those are always important times. We have our new teachers, as I said, tomorrow. Maggie did conduct HR orientation sessions for all new teachers. Did something a little different this year, once again, getting better every year with it. There was, it was small groups, brought in either Randy or Darren Hunt as representation for insurance, since that's a time for them to sign up and explaining our new plans. Had other members of our business office do just a little brief welcome, and some pieces to finding on initial orientation things, and then administrators coming in welcoming as well. We have 23 new teachers this year, that's our lowest number, and since I've been here Superintendent, kind of says that sustainability that we've moved to, which is really good, and quite a crew coming in. I know there's, I've had a chance to go into some of the orientations, and pretty excited. So, we're excited about that as well. Within special services, we still have some paraprofessional positions open that I know Holly and our principals have been very busy with. It is a group that typically has some turnovers because of its fluidity, and that happens. Holly shares here that they're creating a due process manual, some pieces as a resource. We've really found our administrative guidebook that the district office developed as a really great resource and easy to find things. We've also created one for the staff, as again, a go-to place, so it's in one spot. So, that's been really valuable, too. Within our communications and community education, we want to congratulate Tiffany. She is no longer Tiffany Fogle, she is now Tiffany Crabbe. Got married this summer, and she's on a family vacation right now, but pretty excited for her. This was a repeat on the pre-K and early childhood programming. This was an interesting piece. Southern Minnesota conducted an event on the issue of childcare provider shortage, not just in our area, but we're really seeing it across the state of Minnesota. It's a concern that is potential opportunity and challenge within community ed, and definitely challenged with families who are looking for, you know, where their children can go, and yet, we've got some really, you know, the daycare providers do an excellent job. It's not about trying to do anything to hurt that, it's about, is there gaps? And that's really what we're taking a look at, is where are some gaps, so that we can be a service where the gaps are, rather than any other thing. So, we're proud of the daycare that we have in our three communities. Within Special Olympics, moved on to bocce ball this last Saturday in Rochester. Mark was telling me it was a great event. Probably about the same time, some of us were at the Lonsdale Community Days Parade as well, but had our students, young adults, parents, grandma and grandpas, siblings. It was wonderful. Please get on your calendar, the United for Healthy Youth Day, I think it's Thursday, October 23rd. That's a really important night as well for community education, so a week from this Thursday, come on out, it's here at the football field. Now, I, this is incredible to me. Within our food service, as you know, we've been, this is our second year running our summer meals at both in the city of Montgomery and in the city of La Center, and look at this, even though our meal service days were reduced to 40, so it's less time because of the shorter summer, they served over 10,550 breakfasts and lunches. That's just amazing. So, really, kudos to our staff who did this food service, and also our community who were part of it. That's nothing short of phenomenal. TCU Lonsdale, they're really committed deeply into universal design for learning. This is a piece that we introduced as a district about two years ago, and within a partnership with Minnesota State University as kind of a pilot, that brought in a professor to be working with them, and are looking to apply for a personalized learning grant, not just TCU Lonsdale, but other staff from other sites as well. Pretty significant Bush grants that we're applying for there. And, TCU Lonsdale has launched a Twitter page, so check it out, that'll be fun, too. At our high school, lots of summer curriculum writing work. If you recall, last fall, or last spring, I should say, our art department and social studies both presented to the school board on their curriculum review. We knew there was going to be some summer curriculum writing with that, and then our English Language Arts was also involved in curriculum writing as well. And, within our raising capacity for engagement, and something you're going to hear a little bit more tonight with our American Legion, but our high school marching band has been busy this summer with parades. We welcome Mr. Bruce McWilliams as our new band director. They played at Valley Fair and Kalachki Days, will take, they took part in Lonsdale Community Day Parade, and they were selected to march in the 100th Anniversary of the American Legion Celebration Parade, which is on Sunday, August 25th, up in Minneapolis.
26th.
26th, I'm sorry. Yep, I said the wrong date, didn't I? I don't even want to update. Oh, I'm a day off there, Mark. 26th, Sunday, Sunday. So, we know that Mr. Scott and other representatives are going to be sharing with, about that, as well as a little bit more about American Legion and VFW opportunities for kids. So, we've got, we had the American Red Cross Blood Drive, which is this Wednesday, so if you've not signed up, you still can stop by and donate blood and save a life. So, great things happening at TCU in all four of our strategic directions.
All right, before we move on to approving the agenda, there are some additions to the board packet under personnel items, under new hires, Jacob Nadine, Julie Tisdale, Elizabeth Korchak, Jamie Imov, and Melanie Merle. Leave of absence, Lance Wetzel. And under contracts, there's payroll specialist and the human resource generalist, TCU support staff, TCU custodial staff, and also technology network assistant contract. So, those will be additions to the consent agenda. So, with that, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
Make a motion. Second.
Have a motion by Krista Gettle, second by Michelle Borchett, to approve the agenda with noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 7-0.
As we conclude with this, I do want to thank our school board for your involvement, engagement within all of our contract negotiations. We had a lot, and that's usually, you know, on the off years, or those odd, those even-numbered years, I should say, which is pretty typical. So, appreciate that, appreciate our staff who represented the various groups, I think we had some good dialogue. That, I always find that when you can have more of an open dialogue at negotiations, it makes us all better, having a chance to really hear where interests are, and any questions and that. So, I know at each one, there was a lot of clarifying and understanding of those pieces. This concludes all of our contracts and working agreements that come out of Fund One. We do have some Fund Four that will be coming forward in the next month.
All right, so under consent agenda, we have approved our minutes of July 9th, 2018 board meeting, and also our July 23rd special school board meeting. Under personnel, new hires, Craig Nordling, Assistant Cross Country Coach, James Timmerman, Assistant Track Coach, John Hammerschmidt, Volunteer Track Coach, Chad Priggy, 5th Grade Teacher in Lonsdale, Mackenzie Teigs, Math Teacher at the High School, Amy Grenau, a paraprofessional at Montgomery, Maria Moreno, ECFE Parent Teacher, ECFE Outreach Specialist District Wide, Chrissy Menzing, a School Readiness Teacher in Lonsdale, Nicole Jacobs, a School Readiness and ECFE Para District Wide, Sherry Fonseca, Paraprofessional at the High School, Missy Theis, Paraprofessional at Lee Center, Amy Pepping, Paraprofessional at the High School, Jacob Nadine, Volunteer Football Coach, Julie Tisdale, Paraprofessional in Lonsdale, Elizabeth Korchak, Cook's Helper in Montgomery, JB Imov, Assistant Cook at Montgomery, and that's also an increase in hours there, and Melanie Merle, Paraprofessional in Lee Center. Under employment ending, Susan Zellinger, Cook's Helper in Montgomery, Christine Menzing, Early Childhood Special Education Para Montgomery, Molly Dottery, a Paraprofessional at the High School, and Amy Grenau, Point Four Paraprofessional in Montgomery. Under leave of absence, Stacy Limboom, Business Education Teacher at the High School, Lance Wetzel, Custodian in Lee Center. Under contracts, we have TCU food wages, service wages, condition benefits for 2018-19, TCU principals 2018-2020, I meant, I'm sorry, 2018-2020 on the food service, Community Education Director 2018 to 2020, Marketing and Communication Specialist 2018 through 2020, District Office Administrative Assistant Bookkeeper Secretary 2018-2020, Accounts Payable, Accounts Receivable Clerk 2018 to 2020, District Wide Building, Grounds and Maintenance Coordinator 2018 to 2020, TCU Student Support Staff 2018 to 2020, TCU Custodians 2018 to 2020, Technology Network Assistant 2018 to 2020, and Payroll Specialist, Human Resource Generalist, I think that's the 2018-2020. And approval of our bills in the amount of $688,142.62, and also our finance report. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Ashley Receival, second by Kevin Huber, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 7-0. Next, we have our open forum, and I believe there has not been a request to speak to the board this evening, so next, we'll move on to our informational items, and we have Colin Scott here with the American Legion, and the rest of his crew.
Yes, I want to thank Colin for coordinating this information item for us. As I said a little bit earlier, the key purpose here is about getting the word out about our TCU band being selected for the American Legion 100th Anniversary. That doesn't come to Minnesota very often, and it's right here in Minneapolis. And then, what just kind of fits really well with that is getting some insights into American Legion, some of the scholarship opportunities that are possible for students, and the whole citizenship thing, so you do not need the mouse, right Colin?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you so much. Please introduce yourselves, and away we go.
Thanks for having us. My name is Colin Scott. I'm a teacher here at Montgomery K through four, in special education. I have Diane Traxler, who's a VFW auxiliary member, and she's the treasurer and in charge of membership. And I have Mike Maxa, he is our National Membership Director for the American Legion.
State of Minnesota.
Oh, for the state of Minnesota. I gave you a promotion, okay.
I have to get through this year first.
Okay. All right. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to talk about our TCU band, which has, is going to be marching in the American Legion 100th Anniversary Parade, and it's in Minneapolis, like Superintendent Preisler indicated, and it's only the second time in 100 years that it's in Minneapolis. So, I'm pretty excited that they are going to be marching in that parade, and my job as the commander at the Legion in La Center was to, because I initiated the process for them to be in the parade, I had to raise the funds for the buses. So, I went out to our three different Legions in Montgomery, Lonsdale, and La Center, and I requested funds to help us bus the kids there, and all three Legions indicated that they would be willing to share the cost. So, after I got that okay, Palmer Bus gave me a call, and they indicated that they are going to be willing to bus the kids up there and back at no cost to us, or to the school, or to anyone. They wanted to do it to be part of the community's effort to get the kids up there. So, I had to figure out what I was going to do with the funds that I was going to receive, and so I went back to each post, and I told them that my plan would be to use that money to make some bag lunches for the kids, and to get them a couple cases of water. And luckily, all three of the posts agreed and said, hey, that's a great idea, go ahead and do it. So, on the 25th of August, which is the Saturday prior to the parade, we're going to gather at the La Center Legion, and we're going to make sandwiches, and we're going to get the water together, and one of the parents are going to come and pick those items up so the kids can have them the next day. That's the update on that. I think it turned out pretty darn good. You know, it was a big task initially, but I got some pretty good help. Any questions on that?
I just know every time Colin went to meet with someone, he'd stop by. Terry, I just can't believe how generous everyone is, and how everybody's just really all uniting in here to support our kids, so thanks for doing that, Colin.
Totally turned out to be a community effort between all three communities. And the second reason I'm here, you know, as a Legion member, I was exposed to a large amount of information in regards to different scholarships that the Legion and the VFW had out there that our kids were not exposed to. They weren't participating in these items. And I gave you a packet with the scholarships, and, you know, most of the scholarships, all it takes is the effort for the student to apply, and it's a lot of money that I would hate to see our kids not be able to get, especially with the rise in cost of education today, whether it's a four-year college or a two-year college. And the scholarships range, and there are nursing scholarships, there are scouting scholarships, there are baseball scholarships, there are scholarships, just because a parent served in Korea, I don't know, Samsung, they developed a scholarship because they're so appreciative of the Americans helping South Korea in the war, that they've developed, I think it's a $50 million scholarship that they give out every year, and that's just money that's left on the table, and I kind of made it my goal as a commander for my term to make sure that our kids in our community were exposed to these scholarships, and that they just don't go by the wayside. You know, and one thing I wanted to leave you guys with was, I would invite any member of the school board or the community to come to Legion meeting, you know, to see what we do, to ask questions, to be a part of the Legion family. My goal is to make sure that Legion is immersed within our communities, because it's important to not only be a part of the community, but to let the community know, hey, we're here, access us, we have, we have resources we can assist with. There's no need for our community to go without. That's all I have. Diane Traxler is going to go over quickly a program that used to be really, that's the best term is big, in La Center and Montgomery, and for some reason, it's fallen by the wayside. And I think once you hear what she has to say, and the numbers she will tell you about, you'll say, well, that's ridiculous not to have kids exposed to it. And then, Mr. Maxa will go over some additional information. I just want to leave you with one thing that's really motivated me. As a commander, I had to go to a meeting in Rochester last month, and they were given, they had the winners, there was a winner from, a young lady from Lionel Lakes, who did the oratorical scholarship contest, and she went all the way to the national level. And granted, you have to get there, but she put the work in, and at the end, she got second place, which you might say, oh, well, that's not first, but for second place, they cut her a check for $16,000. And then, I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, the state also kicked in some funds to her.
By the time it was all done, it was over $20,000 for this young lady.
Just for something she already is, was doing at school. And I was floored by her poise, and how well she spoke, and what she had to say, and how she showed how appreciative she was of the Legion, you know, being able to give her that opportunity. So, hopefully, when I go to one of these meetings, I can, we can have a TCU student up there, you know, which I think would be phenomenal. So, thank you.
Thank you for putting the information together.
Yeah, I didn't know he was going to have such a big packet. I could drag some stuff off of VFW site, too. I only focused on one thing, Voice of Democracy, used to have, 30 years ago, when I started being in the auxiliary, 40-some entries from Cleveland, 30-some from Lee Center, and big competition. It's a three to five-minute speech that's taped, in those days, of course, on the big reels and everything. Now, it's simple for those kids to do, but it has, it's anonymous. It's not your race, it's not your, who you, who you know, who you, you know, where you are in school, anything like that. It's totally anonymous. Once you tape it, it's done. It goes on all the way through the competition, from the local to the district to the state level, and then, a state winner will win an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC. And the prize there for, of course, the national winner, $30,000 in scholarship. It just one, you know, is issued that way, but all the way up, you're getting money. And most of these kids don't know, I don't tell them that usually at the beginning, that they're going to probably have to give their speech on the way up, too. But they're not judged on how they give it in front of an audience, they're only judged on that one tape that they send up. So, it's an enormous opportunity for somebody, especially somebody who doesn't usually get the recognition they need. I will help anybody who wants help. When it was big, it was assigned by a teacher, and I know in Lee Center, they tried many times to assign it to a history teacher or a social studies teacher. In my mind, if you listen to the speech, you will know it should be a speech kind of thing. It's drawing on personal events in your life. There was not one, I just listened to the one, and in this folder, there's, you'll be able to find that speech, and if you just listen to that three to five-minute speech, you'll be inspired to see how any kid with a motivation could put together that speech. Kids nowadays can do these things, anyway. So, to me, it's, and usually, there's a Veterans Day program, do you have a Veterans Day program here? Usually, they gave the speech at the school also, which was a big cadu, add it to your resume, add it to your, you know, your college application, all that kind of stuff. I mean, all of these things are that way, too, add them to your stuff. But, so I have a folder of things, I would love to see somebody try. I don't want to step on VFW Montgomery's feet, so if they're doing it, cadu's, you know, wait for, you know, great. I think we can only have one entry per school, so tell me who it is, I'll work with them, I'll do, you know, whatever it is. But we've got plenty of, you know, Lee Center kids, you know, that are, and all over the place. We don't care who we sponsor, just one per each school. So, please, please, here's my folder, and listen to that one on there, you'll be inspired yourself, just hearing it. That's it.
You know, and just piggyback on that, at the VFW in La Center, we have a great advantage, and I don't know about Montgomery one, but the, we have a member who was the president of the Voice of America for the state, so he was one of the people who decided, you know, if this student's tape was good enough. So, he knows the in and outs, he knows what to look for, he knows what the tape needs, or what that student needs to do in order to keep moving on, and I just feel, if we have that resource, why not use it? You know, and he said to me the other day, he goes-
He'll be a judge, he always asks if he wants to-
Yeah, he said, Colin, you know, I want, I want to be part of it again, you know, so.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
My name is Mike Maxa. I'm a Redbird alumni, graduated from Montgomery High School back in 1978, joined the Air Force, 20-year active duty, retired. That's how I get my eligibility in the American Legion. I want to briefly just give a little bit of history about the American Legion. The first national convention, which was in 1919, was held in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And Minneapolis almost became the national headquarters. National Headquarters is in Indianapolis right now, and it's been there since, you know, 1920 or something like that. But the only reason Minneapolis missed out is because we had a blizzard that year, and they couldn't get up here. So, and we've had numerous conventions throughout the years. Seven years ago, we had a national convention here, so Minneapolis is very prominent on the scene of the national convention, because we've been so involved since day one. The American Legion was formed in 1919 over in Paris. It was a Paris Caucus, World War I veterans got together in Paris, and decided that they need to have an organization that'll take care of veterans, because the government wasn't. From Montgomery, George Bentley Jr. was on the floor in Paris at the first caucus, and we have his picture hanging in the post, and in national convention, in the convention hall, there's going to be a big display of George Bentley, and it'll say on there, "From Montgomery," so. So, we have a proud history. I want to get into a little bit about the face of the American Legion. We are really trying to get over the stigma of we're not a bar, you know. I just had this conversation at work here about a week ago, the young lady was asking, well, how's your bar, and you know, blah, 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 and I said, the American Legion is not about the bar. The bar helps support some of our funding for supporting our children and youth in our communities, but we are a Legion family, we're four components. The Legionnaires, which are the veterans, then we have our auxiliary, and underneath the auxiliary is the junior auxiliary, where the kids of the, girls of the auxiliary can join, and they have their own little organization, and they have a president, and they go out and raise funds for the junior auxiliary and do different things. Then we have the Sons of the American Legion, and you have to be a son of a veteran from grandfather, uncle, to join the Sons. And they're doing a lot of things, and really, the Sons right now are keeping the American Legion alive, because they have more energy than Legionnaires. Our, we're old, our average age is probably 70, I'm not. Is about 70-some years old, so we've got a lot of gray hairs. And then, our last component, which is the newest component, is our Legion Riders, and they were just in Montgomery here a week ago Saturday. They stopped by, they're on their legacy run, and the Legacy Fund is a scholarship fund for the children of our fallen heroes and our severely disabled veterans. I am proud to say Minnesota is the number-one contributor for the last three years. When we went to national convention last year in Reno, Nevada, our Legion Riders from the state of Minnesota got up on stage and presented the national commander a check for $200,000. This year, so far, they just finished their run this past Sunday, they're up to $210,000. Their goal is 250 to present at the national convention in Minneapolis. They're pretty confident they're going to make it. I just read on Facebook that they have checks coming in and a lot of donations, so we're pretty excited and pretty proud of our Riders. So, and they're not a bike gang, they're just riders. They like to ride motorcycles, okay? Even though they're all patched up and everything, they're just, they do a lot of great things. Next, I want to just get into a few of the programs that the Legionnaires have in our program, and one of them is Legionville. That's up around Brainerd, and we send students from grade school, I think they're about the 4th, 5th grade, they have to be qualified for Safety Patrol. We send them up there for a week, and we pay all the costs, Post 79 pays all the costs. We usually send about four kids, and they go up for camp, and they learn safety of the roads. Highway patrolmen come up and educate these kids, then they also go canoeing, swimming, and just have a good time. And then, we invite the kids at our Legion birthday party in March, that's our anniversary, March is the anniversary of the Legion, and they come before us and speak, and the kids do wonderful. It's a fantastic program. Another program, Junior Shooters, is growing bigger and bigger every year, and I know down in Morristown, they have a great big program down there, and I don't, I thought someone from Montgomery was down there shooting- And I don't, I thought someone from Montgomery was down there shooting, and I can't, don't quote me on that. Then we get into Eagle Scout of the Year. We are, we are a big part of the Boy Scouts. We sponsor them and support them any way we can. Legion Baseball, another big program. Minnesota has the most Legion Baseball teams in the, in the nation. So we're number one there. And then this is where I really need your help, you know. They, Colin touched on it, is the Oratorical Contest. The district, we're in the third district. We have the Oratorical Contest right here in Montgomery at Post 79. And we've had it there for the last five years. And I know I've come over and I've tried to get, you know, someone, some, I'll get in front of these kids and thank God, you know, I met Colin because now we've got an inside track. But we felt we'd just come before the school board. If we can sell you guys on this, then we can get maybe to the teachers next and start selling them on these programs. But the Oratorical, they speak on the Constitution. The subject matter is already out there. It's on the website. They speak for three to five minutes, and it's all memorized. And they're speaking, okay? That's, our program's a lot different than the VFW. After they, and they're judged, there's, we, and I've been a judge the last couple of years. We have criteria that we have to follow and check off and things like that. After that first phase, we, they're not prepared. The first phase, they're prepared. They can prepare for that. Second phase, we give them a subject matter, give them five minutes to prepare, and they come out again and speak for three to four minutes, I think. It's a little shorter. And, you know, I'm getting chills now. If you would come in and listen to these kids, it's, they're phenomenal. They know more about our Constitution than the three of us put together. It, it's just amazing. And, and you can go out onto the Legion website, and there are some of those oratorical speeches out there. And take a look at them. I know there's some on YouTube also. So, you know, you know, Barb Turks, you know, bless her heart, every time I ask her for help, she's, does her best. But we need to push from, I think, the faculty side more and the parents, get the parents more involved. And then Boy State. That's the last one I'm going to talk about. It, what it is, it's for, the boy has to be a junior going into a senior year, just finished his junior year. We send them, right now, it's up in Collegeville. We send them there for a week. And again, you know, Post 79, if we have been sponsoring boys, this past year, we did not get a boy, but years previously, we normally do. But we pay the enrollment fee, which is 300-some dollars now. And they go up for a week, and they learn how to run a government. It starts at the township level, and it goes all the way up to governor. And once you get into like the mayors and county seats and things like that, they actually campaign for those seats. And then, after they get the government all set, then they start making policy and law and rules for Boy State and how Boy State should be ran. And it's just a phenomenal program. It's, if Post 79 selects them, that boy, and we're the sponsor, we give a $1,000 scholarship to that, to that boy. So-
When they complete Boy State, when they get back.
You know, and if we're lucky enough to ever get a governor coming out of TCU, off to Boys Nation, he'll go. And then it's on the federal level. So it is, the programs that we have are just fantastic, and I can't speak highly enough about them. And all this information is out on the Legion website. And we're just here to ask for your support and help us motivate some of these, these kids because there's, there's a lot of opportunity for them. And just trying to help them become good citizens. Any questions for me?
Well, one thing I wanted to also, there is a Girl State also.
Yes, yes. And that's the auxiliary handles that, and it's the same exact program. It's just on the girl's side. They're, they're running a government. And actually, the girls get to go to the Capitol and sit in the senators' congress, you know, the seats, and actually vote and see the, the board light up. So, and my daughter, she was a Girl Stater, and she had a great time.
I was a Girl Stater in North Dakota.
Yeah.
To Grand Forks for the week. And I remember, I mean, you were there like within an hour, and you were already in-
Yeah.
Meetings and who's going to run for what. And I just remember going, I don't even, at that point, really knew all the varying levels. So you just, it was a great learning experience and a lot of friends that I am still friends with. And we were in each other's weddings and lifelong friends.
Yes. And they do, you know, they'll play basketball, they have softball, and if you're a musician, they have a band. So there's, there's other things they do. They keep them busy. They keep them really busy. So, any questions for me that you might have?
My question is for Colin. This, thank you again for the nice packet. But recent graduates, can they still apply for any of these scholarships?
I don't think so. There, there is, there is one that I looked at, and it was self-interest. It's called, and you looked at it with me, it was for people who were already working and they were going back to school.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I saw that, non-traditional.
Yeah, non-traditional.
That's what it was called.
So, a non-traditional scholarship out there. And as I told Ms. Traxler, I wish I had known about that when I went back to get my teaching degree. But that's the only one I know of. But it's mostly geared towards kids who are in school and getting ready to go on to post-high-school life.
Any other questions?
I have one. Sorry.
No, I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, for Colin, I guess, did you have any thoughts or suggestions on how it would make sense to get these into kids' hands? Like the scholarships, I mean, since you're a teacher in the district, you, are there opportunities that you're thinking that we have to do that?
Well, one thing I've already pursued was I, I got in touch with one of the counselors, and I told her, when the school starts, I'll get ahold of her and, you know, give her any information. But I think we're going to have to do beyond that because those counselors are so overwhelmed with information, they have to get to the kids. I guess my goal is to get it to the kids at the grassroots, at our level here, the ground level, as opposed to say, hey, if you're going to go to a two-year, four-year, you know, you need to write this essay for XYZ Company. Well, no, hey, the Legion here in Montgomery, or the Legion in La Center, or the Legion in Lonsdale, they have opportunities that I'm not going to sit here and say guarantee, but you can probably have a, a pretty good chance of getting those scholarships. Does that sound correct, Mike?
Does money motivate kids nowadays? I got to ask that question.
No.
Well, I think when you're talking $30,000.
You know, and it doesn't, it doesn't stand out that way, but they, I can't get them to look at it, so, you know, I don't know if it is that motivates them.
Go to Legion and fill this out because that kid probably won't go to Legion.
Right. No, I, I understand that.
No, you're right.
And if I, if I find that there's a kid who has some semblance of interest, I will pursue that student, you know, in, in a positive way. I'm not going to badger him, but I will make sure-
Thank you for that clarifier there.
I will make sure that they have all the information that they need and answer all the questions that they have so that there isn't an excuse. They're like, oh, I, I didn't know this, or I didn't know that, or, or I didn't know I could do that. You know, I don't want anyone to, to not have an opportunity to do something great.
And if there's any questions about this, just contact one of the posts, you know, and we'll find someone to get you the answers. If I can't do it, I'll find someone to help and mentor these students and, you know, do whatever we can to help.
Do the students need to be associated with?
No, not all of them. Not all of them.
Not in our case.
You know, there are some scholarships, as I, you know, like I said, I, I, Mike has made me aware of more of these scholarships. And I was reading through a few of them because I have kids, and I'm looking at, hey, you know, what scholarships are they going to possibly get? There was one for, it's ROK, Republic of Korea Scholarship, and it's for children of military, military members who served in Korea, you know. And there are a ton of military veterans out here in, in our area, and their kids or grandkids can benefit from those. You know, there are scholarships, just because your parent was in the military, you are eligible to receive those funds. You know, it, I'm just amazed that, at the amount of opportunities that are out there. And I just feel bad that our kids in the past were, were not exposed to that, you know, at least given the opportunity to say, hey, we at least led you to, to where it is, and whether you pursued it or not was your choice.
You mentioned about getting the information to our students, but also to our parents, which I totally agree. Is there, do you now, I mean, since, you know, when you said we have members in our community who, who's either children or grandchildren would qualify, is there a, a pathway of like sending to those people whose children or grandchildren might qualify that these scholarships are like mailed to them to say, hey, I want you to be aware of this, that, you know, share with your grandchildren or that kind of thing? So it's coming twofold, too?
I, I think that's something we can explore. We never really thought about that.
Never did, tried that.
Yeah, you know, there's no, we can, yeah.
I mean, because you may know what scholarships fit for people who've served in what wars or those kinds of things, so that then you're getting a direct pipeline that way. And I could imagine if my grandpa had been one that would qualify for that, for him to say, hey, Terry, you should look at that. I mean, that carries a lot of weight.
Mm-hmm, yep, right.
Good point.
Or my grandma, you know?
Yeah, I will definitely look at that angle, you know. My goal is just to try to get the information out there. It's been sort of tied up in a box so long, and just want to open up that Pandora box and let it all out.
Well, and I think, to answer your question, as much as anything, it's about getting people's attention nowadays. You know, we're all just so information-bombarded, be it students, be it adults, it's just, you know, finding that way to get, to get their attention. And, and sometimes that doesn't mean, you know, money kinds of things. It's just getting in front so that it doesn't get clouded with all the other things happening or all the other things coming at them. I think of, you know, the information that hits our students on a daily basis is incredible. So it's siphoning it through and finding those, those various targets. And so, you know, I said, maybe it's about mailing it to the grandparents or parents and saying, hey, did you know?
Yeah, mine is, is you got to have it done by October 31st, which puts kind of a kink on the first of the year. So just, just throw that out.
And are these usual, I mean, I assume they're scholarships, so there's going to be predominantly seniors. But is there any types of things that start at a younger age in that junior high type?
This is nine through 12.
Isn't it just what this Voice of Democracy is, nine through 12?
Mm-hmm.
Oratorical, I think sophomore, 10 through 12.
Sometimes our junior hires are the ones who are-
And that, the young lady, that one out of Lionel Lakes, I think she was a sophomore going into her junior year.
She was phenomenal.
Everybody has a chance.
You know, we had a lot of good speakers at that meeting, and I think one person said to me, he said, that young lady, she is more poised and speaks better than a lot of the speakers who we had at that convention. She was perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Mr. Fitter, you are up next for ACT testing.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Price. I've put together a document for you to kind of show the historical track since all juniors have started taking the ACT test. And then I put some notes there, basically, 1415 was the year that the state required all students, before they graduated, to take some kind of a standardized test. And we chose the ACT because we thought that would be a good test for all students to look at. And every kind of realm, including equity, gives all students a chance to perform at a high level. Each, each one of these school years, we've always done the practice test, which is the same test from the previous year. They pull all ACT test questions in. And that's been very unbeneficial because for most young people, this is actually the first major test. You know, it's a four-hour test. And so it's the first real major test that they've had to sit down and take. And there's, there's a small break of 10 minutes after test, too. And they get a snack and get some water, but there can be no, no liquids and no food in the actual testing area. We've always tested at the American Legion here in Montgomery, both the practice test and the actual test. Two years ago, we moved the practice tests up to, right away, in September. And this year, we'll do the same thing. We'll have it that first Friday in September, which is kind of different. It's week two. It's normally our first week, but it'll be week two since we weren't having a school the previous Friday. And that'll be good for them. It's a learning experience. And we head over that way, and then we come back here and finish with our lunch afterwards. And we put all the test data together. As you can see with the spread here, every, every grade level is different. Every class is, is a different. Last year, we started the ACT college prep on the college program with John Baylor. And I put that inside the notes for 1718. You will see, Dr. Price, can you shift to that second tab? As we look at what? What's second tab? Maybe the second tab didn't get loaded up. Well, the second tab will share with you that this, this past year, the, the college benchmarks, reading the benchmarks. And what that means is if a student hits a benchmark, which in mathematics is a 22 on the ACT subtest, in English, it's an 18, in reading, it's a 22, and in science, it's a 23. So if that student hits that benchmark, then they have a college class that equates to it, and they have a 50% chance of earning a B or higher in that college course. So this past year, we had 60% of our juniors hit the English benchmark, 42% of our juniors hit the mathematics benchmark, 38% hit the reading benchmark, and 32% hit the science benchmark. Out of all of our juniors that, that took the ACT, 23% of them hit all four benchmarks. And hitting, either meeting three or four benchmarks was 32% of them. And I, and I shared those numbers because the previous year, our seniors that just graduated, they were at 48% for the English. This year's seniors are at 60 already. The class of 18 was at 24% for the mathematics. This year's seniors, last year's juniors at 42. 23% for the reading, this year's group's at 38. 25 for the science, this year's group at 32. And we only had 13% of our graduating class this, this past spring actually meet all four benchmarks compared to 23% of our current seniors. And then met three out of four. Last year's group was 19%, and this year, they're at 32%. So I just share that to show what that college prep program really helped in getting our students at a level where through the repetition, through hearing the same message over and over, not only did it help them for the ACT, but, but also for the MCAs, also for just TCU finals and different testing strategies. So they're not leaving things blank. So they're not just taking guesses. So they can figure out how to get rid of a couple of the answer um selections possibly to narrow down the opportunities.
Any questions on this kind of information?
Trend sounds like it's going in the right direction.
I was very pleased with what we saw. From a high school, our building goal, our building goal is based on the ACT college benchmarks. And we met our building goal, both in the composite and the number of students that, that met the benchmarks. Our targeted group goals, all students in special education, English language learners, 504 plans, and the ALP. We also met in each one of those subcategories, too. So that makes us challenged to set the goals higher.
Got it.
Because we've done it. So, yeah, it was, it was very pleasing in June. It's almost too bad because we don't get the results until June. And they're embargoed, so you can't really celebrate with your staff because nobody here. But very pleasing. I sent a message out in my briefs, and so it's good to see. Looking at this upcoming school year, can I just throw some numbers out?
If there's any other questions on this, though?
Yep. We've got a junior class of 149, but that includes five international students, so- So roughly, we're looking at 144, 145 juniors that will have the opportunity to take the ACT test. Once again, the state is looking at funding those on free and reduced. And they also fund any student that approaches administration and shares, I cannot afford to take this. Last year, it was the same funding as last year. Last year, the board in October approved paying for all of our juniors to take this test. I am extremely supportive of that happening again. I appreciate the board taking that action last fall. I think that the test results show that every one of these students now has the ACT in their back pocket. And they can take it as many times, well, they can take it up to 12 times. I have never heard of a student taking the ACT 12 times. But they can take it 12 times if they want to keep trying to improve their scores. So they've been through that first round. I already know that we'll have seniors who'll take it again. I already know of one senior that took it in June after taking it on April 24th. So students want to do better. And if we can have your support again in looking at possibly funding, we would need about 100 juniors funded at $44.50 per ACT exam. We would not do the writing again this year. That jumps up quite a bit, another $12, $13. So roughly, it'd be about $4,450 to fund this year's junior class from TCU dollars with the state taking care of about 45 of our students. Granted, that's based on last year's numbers as sophomores because we don't have that data yet as juniors.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
It just came to me. What is the score that most colleges require to get in? There used to be a four, like for four-year colleges, you needed to have an ACT or...
They've looked...
Different.
It's different at each school.
Yep.
Typically?
A Minnesota State and Mankato, they look at a composite somewhere in that 21 range. So I don't have that data with me right now, but we had a number of students that had huge increases from their practice test back in the fall, in September, to where they scored now. I was once again very pleased at the number of students that hit that 20, 21, 22 range for a composite. Now, to break it down further, there's the four subtests. And we always try to work with students to really focus on that one subtest where you know you're not going to do well because that's not a strong area for you. And that's where the, on to college resources, they can go on that 24/7. Students that took it last year still have access this year. So 21 for a general state college score. As you're looking at the privates, you want to be in that 28, 29 range. And I had one young lady who took it as a sophomore last year, and she said, should I take it again? I said, absolutely, because every number you get higher than your previous test, frankly, that's the more money that comes your way. Somebody asked the question, do kids still like money? And I heard Dr. Price say, well, at $33,000, yes. And one more tick higher or going from a 28 to a 30, you're looking at quite a few thousands of dollars more coming your way. And every college will put that little plan together for you, the student, especially the private colleges. There is no standard cost anymore. They will give you packages. The higher you are, the more they want you to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? So tonight was really, you know, since last year was the first year as a district, we funded because it had been funded by either the state or the Pearson aspect before. Thought it would be valuable for you to, as the board, to know, you know, the results, how many students did participate. With this necessarily being a mandatory test as it was back in 1415, we had, I mean, I don't know how many did not, but it was a very small number of students.
Five.
Yeah, who did not participate. That's a really big sign there that the students see some value in it too. So is there, is there any questions you have, Mr. Fitter, in order for me to prepare to bring it forward to the board for action to consider funding?
No, I think it's a great thing that we're offering.
For sure, bring it forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're just opening the door for those kids who normally wouldn't take it, that they have the opportunity to do so. And, hey, I can do that. Yeah, a good thing.
All right, well...
The equity is great.
Yeah.
We'll prepare for a September action as Molly, as our district assessment coordinator, is already receiving information from ACT and state on registration.
Great.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Fitter.
One thing, other thing I guess to look for in the future, we're hopeful that this is not hopeful. We anticipate this will be our last year needing to go offsite for the testing. As we have then our building projects completed in the 1920 school year, we have done a space analysis in the new classroom areas. And because of the flexibility of the walls and the openness that it can provide, our biggest, we would be able to test a grade level there so that we're not having flipped seats within the auditorium, which aren't necessarily conducive for when it does move to online only, which I do foresee that will come. Our biggest piece will be to find enough desks and tables to do that and the displacing of the students. But now that we'd be able to have alternative learning areas in differing sizes of groups, it gives us that chance to do so for our students. So they're staying right here on our campus.
Good deal.
Exciting.
Very.
All right, next we'll move on to our committee updates. And I believe that we haven't had any committee meetings over the summer, except for negotiations.
Yeah, we were filled with negotiations meeting. Yeah, so we will gear up with more committee meetings coming up as we fit those in with everything else with building projects and everything.
All right, so next we'll move on to new business. And first up will be sub and temporary worker rate of pay.
Yeah. This is an annual action that comes forward. Maggie Graham did do some research with other areas within the various employee groups. And we also took a look at our, within the employee groups, where some of the more challenges come. And then also with our newly negotiated contracts and now approved, taking a look at some of those percentages. We start with teachers. Within the districts that she did survey, we found that we, along with New Prague, were at the highest at 125. And that Lister Henderson has 130 for their tiered system. Their start is only at 115. Did take a look at the tiered system. I remember Mr. Bus bringing that up a year ago. What we found is our challenge here is to get more subs. Those who come, they do a great job and very loyal, and we are so thankful. We had this last year, 34 teacher subs that worked more than 10 days and 18 teacher subs that worked less than 10 days. Gives you a little aspect there. So at this point, for the, for the bookkeeping aspect of it, but still also realizing that we are still within a competitive, and I misspelled plane, is also at 125, we are recommending at this point to remain at the 125 level. Within our other areas, we are recommending an increase in our paraprofessional subrate. Again, that kind of fitting with the increase in the starting salary for our paraprofessionals. Say paraprofessionals, as you heard from Mrs. Spessert at our last meeting, probably one of our toughest employee groups to find substitutes for. And so we're recommending to increase that. Food service, another area, it's a challenging one to fill because there's a lot of uniqueness to the positions. I mean, you're not just coming in and scooping up potatoes. You got to really, I know sometimes our food service say, well, we're just lunch ladies. Oh, by no means. You know, when I shadowed one of our food service employees, I was sweating and had sore back and everything else. So it could tell you, A, I'm out of shape, but B, it is nonstop. And so sometimes that makes people nervous to go, oh, this is not what I expected. But Amy has done a really good job in doing some pre-training with sub pools. So it's not just someone walking off the street. They're coming in for, kind of knowing what to expect. So we're looking at a recommended increase there. We're increasing in our custodial, all three of those by 25 cents, and secretaries by 50. And we're recommending nurse subs staying at the same. Really, most of our nurse subs, we handle internally. So Amanda will go uncover. And then, since Amanda's at the high school, Jess Serry will fill in for the rest of the day because she's had some training with that. So that is what we're recommending within our support staff. This does the hourly breakdowns. Again, this is, fits within our, pretty close with our teacher rate as well. And then our targeted services summer school rates, which are set through this aspect. And then at our extended school year, which is special education only, is rate of pay, and that's in the contract. And so that's our recommendation for 2018-19. Any questions?
If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Have a motion by Kevin Huber, second by Dan Rudd, to approve the substitute temporary employee rates of pay for 2018-19 school year. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion has passed 7-0. Next, we have our solar garden subscription.
Yeah. Well, this was brought forward at the work session. And as discussed there, it asks the board if there was any information you needed for us to bring it back for action. Mr. Mink is representing TCU at the Montgomery Planning and Zoning Meeting tonight as a part of the permitting. So he's unable to be here. And I know that he'll represent us well. But this is basically a reflection of the proposal that was brought forward. One of the pieces that's a little different is that instead of the full subscription at one garden, we would be split between two gardens, which is a good thing. Because if one garden is not producing as strongly as the other, the second one could be. So when you looked at the tables here towards the end, sorry that I know that scrolling makes people, just close your eyes. Okay, I missed it. But it split, when we were talking about the 8,700 a year in that first year, when I looked at the first table, it didn't show that. But it's between the two tables put together. It does still fit. And remembering that this is a fixed rate, it is not a variable. So those are guaranteed. And just kind of showing you the conceptual layout of the gardens. And it's all of the aspects that were shared within the presentation. It is still with NACOMAS. And it is a 25-year plan with the heaviest up at the front and still great return at the end. Interestingly, after our last work session, I had a call from one of our residents saying, I understand you're looking at solar gardens. I have some land. I might be really, I'd be really interested in pursuing that. And so I did share that with the vendor. They did check with XL. At this point, that land would not fit because of some of the other aspects going on, but one to keep on the radar. So people are really interested in this opportunity.
Whoa.
There we go. So this is the smaller garden, as you can see. And then the other one is in Exhibit A, which is the larger amount in 7,000. Both would be in Rice County. And remembering that, oh, looks like we need to change this premise that it's not east any longer. I'm sure that pulled off of an old state aspect there. But TCU Laundstall is the only one that qualifies for this at this time because of the XL energy connection. And our hope really is that some of our other electric providers will consider opening that up for schools as well. Any questions for me while I'm the scroll of death here?
On one of those pages, when I was looking at it, there was a section, you know, with the agreement that made the statement, no warranty. And I was wondering, I was hoping Carl would be here to find out what that no warranty meant and what aspect wasn't there a warranty for.
In our conversations and meetings, which we had probably three or four of them, Julian, the only aspect that came about from warranty was on some equipment, but that it still locks us in for the subscriber for the, for the solar garden credits. Make sure that. So no inclination there. But do you by chance remember where it was at? So I know when I read it through, there was a lot here.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I'll do a search on the word warranty.
Yeah, I'm not going to look.
Take away, have Carl get back to you.
It's on page three. Operation of the facility.
It was, the one that I saw, it was like another indentation from a letter C type situation.
Fourth. Oh, right here, no warranty?
Yep, there you go.
Page 12.
Page 12, not page three?
It's under number 16, limitation of liability. No party. Do you want me to read it?
Okay.
Oh, stop. Right there, B.
And from all aspects and every other part was that the rate is a fixed one. So if the board would prefer tonight, if you would like to take action with the, like the addendum within the motion of having a clarification on that warranty, we certainly can do that. So I want to make sure that all of your questions are answered.
Is that the section under?
No, I mean, I just, I just thought it was interesting when that, I was reading...
It's a valid question.
It is a great question.
Good eye.
Yeah, but I guess. Does it just, if you scroll up Superintendent Price, or does it, no, back to page 12 now, excuse me. I guess my only question would be, is it, does it just pertain to this section under...
The dispute.
Under limitation of liability. I mean, that would be my only question. I mean, like I said, I'm very much in favor of doing this. I have, you know...
And there's, there's no financial investment on our part whatsoever.
Correct, right.
So if the garden were not producing and this needed to end, what our understanding in all the other aspects was, we aren't out anything.
Correct.
Just get clarification.
Yep, yep. Great question. Any other questions? So, thank you, Dale.
Yeah, yeah.
Just search the word warranty.
Mm-hmm.
Would the board be, that's up to you guys to make a motion or not. And if it dies, it dies. If you want to put that addendum on the motion, whatever pieces the board would like to do.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the addendum that we get a little more information. Just some clarification around warranty. Well, and that's what I'll add on there with clarification and the limitation of liability, no warranty. I'll add that part in there.
I'll second that.
Okay. So a motion by Michelle Borcher, second by Dale Bus, to approve the solar garden subscription with NACOMAS at TCU Laundstall with the clarification and limitation of liability, no warranty. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Motion has passed 7-0.
All right.
Nice job.
Yes, thank you. We'll do, we'll do some digging in on there and I'll let you know. Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have our identified official with authority, Iowa.
Yes.
It was funny.
I know, it is funny. And, you know, me being such a Gopher fan, to think that I am the Iowa is odd. This is an annual approval. It is mandated by the Minnesota Department of Education that each school district identify this identified official with authority. The role and responsibility that comes with that is that in the various aspects and designations of... of MDE for such things as discipline reports, as serves financials, as you name it, there's probably a list of seventy-five different things that I need to go in and grant specific staff members the authority to be able to access those. So it's very delineated and very controlled as to who can get into our, our information and who cannot. And so that is the annual designation. And I would recommend that that continue and land with me.
Take a motion.
I'll take a motion. Do you have a question?
No, I was gonna say. Go ahead.
Dale's got it.
All right, Dale, all right. Motion by Asher Receval, second by Dale Bus to approve the superintendent Terry Preisler as the identified official with authority to authorize user access to the Minnesota Department of Education's secure websites. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed seven zero. Next, well, we want to go into closed. We want to skip that as long as he's not here.
Well, I know Mr. Maroni was coming from another commitment. I do believe it was with his son. And he thought he'd be here at seven fifteen or possibly seven thirty. Would you like us to go to closed session and then reopen? Or do you want me to give him a quick call to see if he's in our parking lot?
We want, we could do that. Make him, yeah, let's do that first.
All right.
Give him a quick call.
I've never done this.
Up next.
What can you do, huh? How often does this happen?
Never.
We have our TCU Lonsdale project bid award recommendation.
Okay.
We have Dave here.
Well, thank you for inviting me here tonight. If it looks like I just came from a end-of-season baseball party, it's probably because I did.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Fifty-four games my son played this season, so crazy. Just kind of summer went like that. So anyway, yeah, we had some good, is this a PowerPoint or just?
It's just, you have to scroll the PowerPoint.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, good. So we're here to share with you some good news about the bids that we received for the Lonsdale Elementary Edition. So let's get started. Next slide.
You have it right in front of you.
Oh. Next slide. I get it.
Brenda's not your secretary.
I get it. I get this. Okay, well, very good. So what this is, we all know what this is, right? This was what the estimates were based on. This was what was in the review and comment. This was the basic needs that we foresaw before we really got the time to spend with the staff and the administration and the school. And then, of course, you know, the whole scare with inflationary trends that we've been seeing and stuff. And how do we consolidate this addition so that it makes the most sense financially, functionally, and impact on the site? So what we did, this was, this might be fun just to show, you know, remind everyone that we really were planning two additions to this building kind of last year. And I'm delighted that we, we consolidated, consolidated that. So if I just roll this, what we're here to talk about tonight is kind of the outcome of that. So we did receive bids and seven bidders bid on this project. You guys have a recommendation, right? It's part of your board packet?
Yeah.
Let me just grab that so I have it too.
And I also have, the tab to the left is your letter of recommendation.
Oh, wow, okay, good. Okay. Well, seven bidders. I mean, that in itself, wow, what a lot of interest in your project. Delighted to see that by the uniformity of the bids, you know, in other words, the closeness of it. I mean, the, the low bid was like eight hundred dollars or a thousand dollars difference from the second low bid. So things like that just all play into, well, it makes me as an architect feel good because I think they're all looking at the drawings to bid this, which they are. And I think that when you get numbers that close and so many people looking at that, that adds favorable to the, the level of detail that we've got and the consistency and how people are looking at our drawings. So that's all good because that should equate to, you know, minimal change orders and minimal uncertainty. Okay? So I like that. I like to see what we saw on your bid opening. Can't promise this at the next one. This may or may not ever occur again. Like, I don't know if I've shared with you before, but like when we bid Marshall's High School, a brand-new high school, you know, back in two thousand and five, two bidders showed up. Go figure. You know, you just don't know. So I was delighted to see that seven bidders came to, to the bid opening. We did the internal team, administration. We looked at the alternate bids that we had. We had several alternate bids. And everybody remembers what alternate bids are, the things that sure would be nice to be able to do this, or, you know, we're not a hundred percent sure that we can afford it, but, you know, it would really make a difference in functionality or the quality or something like that, you know, long-term maintenance of the facility, the roof, you know, a better warranty. So we built in those kind of alternates. So we had eight different alternates for the project. And we were looking at recommendations centered around, and I'll go like this. Okay, well, here's the bid tab. And this happens sometimes, the low base bidder didn't end up being the low bidder because of the pricing on the alternates, the alternate bids. So what happened is we saw this thing that occurs once in a while where they swapped positions. As we started to evaluate and accept the alternate bids, basically Mo's Contracting became the low bidder for this project. Okay? And there isn't any rationale to the order or the sequence of those alternates. You don't have to take one after another, anything like that. It literally is, you know, a list of, of, of a variety of different things that we can as a district. We can make recommendations from our standpoint as a designer, but ultimately, we're basically building the project together with those alternates. So I just wanted to share with you some things about, you know, the site. The, what's, what I think is really good here is that we've got a contractor access point off of the main road out here, not from within your parking area. And that is, these are all, this is all part of the contract documents. So it's clearly defined from the, you know, each of the bidders looked at this. We talked about it at the pre-bid meeting where a lot of people showed up and we walked around the site. But using this entry here, this kind of natural flat area here, fencing it in so we can contain this construction area so that students are separated, safer conditions. Basically, the amount of interface between the workers and the school is really minimal because albeit they're going to start the addition right away, they're not going to do any of the interior work until next summer. So basically, when we get to that point here, which we can right now, this is the plan as we see it right now. So the big gray area here, here is the addition. This little area over here is the art room work. We're relocating the art room work. It was part of the alternates. So it was twenty-four thousand dollars, alternate bid number three, art room relocation. You know, you can see everybody bid on that. And, you know, one person thought it should be forty thousand, the low person, or, you know, one, twenty-one thousand, twenty-four, twenty-four thousand. I mean, there's an average in there. And it seems like a reasonable investment, reasonable number to get that accomplished. So we looked at accepting that. That work is being done in the building. That's in the summertime.
And what that basically includes, because we would have had an art room with no water.
Yeah.
No cupboards. Not, not real conducive for an art room. And being able then to keep our fifth and sixth grade more compacted together, that's why there was a determination to move the art room more into the, closer to the other specialist areas. Safer flow, those types of things. But yeah, it would have been a little challenging to have art room without water.
Well, you can change the sign and call it an art room, but functioning is, is the next part. So yeah, it's the investment. One nice piece here, the contractor sees this as fairly minimal because, and easy to accomplish next summer, but basically we've got our plumbing wall right here. So we keyed on that area there, of course. So it's not like we're saw cutting halfway across the building to get plumbing to it. So that was very good. So that was one of the ones that, that we recommended as a team be accepted. Two other ones basically had some enhancements in kind of educational philosophy. When we talked to the teachers, you know, this is a K-one wing and kind of an auxiliary classroom here for flex and future growth. But basically, these three kindergarten rooms and then these first grade and second grade classrooms, sorry, first, it's a first K-one-two area. When we spoke with the teachers about teaming and kind of sharing resources or maybe letting students kind of work together or the teachers work together, we talked about these operable glass partitions that basically allow for them to be closed acoustically, but yet they can open up that wall. It's not like it's going to open up the whole wall, but it opens up about seven or eight feet of that wall, allowing kind of a natural flow between the two. Teacher can be situated at that point and basically see both rooms, things like that. So it adds functionality and kind of, you know, team teaching capability that really doesn't exist in the building with the old, the other classrooms. So that seemed to fit, you know, that age group and that desire and the curriculum. And, and so that was something that we put as an alternate bid, and that was twenty-six thousand dollars for bid alternate one, the operable glass partition walls. They're very similar, but smaller than the ones we're planning for the high school. Remember, we talked about the functionality, flexibility of that. So these are a smaller scale version of those operable walls. The other big one, you know, code-wise, you know, we're okay with these, the additional fixtures here, you know, two for the boys, two for the girls. But basic, you know, much like what exists in the building. But basically, when we were meeting with the kindergarten, you know, they've got access to that now and it's sure, you know, it's part of their program, the way they operate, they're comfortable with it. They, it's, we just couldn't say yes, you know, because it's money. It's a lot of money to do that. And when we saw the bid at twenty-six thousand dollars, that's a very fair price. Some of the prices were fifty thousand, forty-two thousand, thirty-five thousand. It was a great value. And not that that's not worth it, it probably would have been worth it at that money too. But it sure is going to kind of finish those kindergarten rooms and provide that single-user toilet for each of the rooms that I think is going to be very positive with the staff and the teachers and the kids that are your youngest, or among your longest, youngest learners in the building. So we suggested that for acceptance. So we talked about those first two, the third one, you know, the roof, that whole gray area, you know, that's the roof also. So basically, what we're looking at is a base bid of a sixty mil, twenty-year warranty, single ply, fully adhered EPDM roof, just like we were base bidding at La Center. And like La Center, we had that option for ninety. Actually, actually, we did that after the fact there, but this time we did it part of the bid. So we get to see what that value is with the bid. And to take that next jump up for an additional ten years of warranty, thirty more mils of thickness, we're getting some good success feedback from the roof at La Center. It's going down very well. And it's, it seems to be a system that's got some real value. So for an additional eleven thousand dollars, to be able to have that in place here seems like it was a logical, logical step. We had a lot of other roof alternates mainly around the color of the roof. I want to be clear that this is a black thirty mil roof that we're suggesting here. There are actually three other, or two other alternates for roof. Two of them were white. Well, why were they going to be white? Well, if you were going to put solar panels up on that roof, not so much this generation, but maybe the next generation where they get this bounce back and it kind of doubles up the collective qualities of it, that white roof would pay dividends. So it was kind of an investment in that future functionality of the solar. So we, you know, does it cost more? Well, I never really did think it costs that much more, but hmm, it does cost more. You know, for this bidder, that's a fifteen thousand dollar add. So it's a little bit more for white. In this part of the country, you know, our region here, there's a line that kind of exists south of here, many states actually, or states south of here, to where the white reflectivity roof, is it a better value for a, a school or is it, does it help or hurt? And you hear a lot about, yeah, you want a white roof because it's going to decrease your cooling loads and da-da-da-da-da. Well, that's absolutely true in the southern regions of the country. It was true at the Marshall Ice Arena when we did that a couple of years ago because we're trying to keep that cold in the winter. For a typical school, I haven't heard anyone say that they would disagree with this and the line kind of exists south of here anyway, but black is still better long-term for schools because you're doing more heating, you know, days than you are cooling days in the school. So, you know, it's a little bit less expensive. It's, it's black. I think it's going to help your heating. It helps melt the, the snow off your load, you know, so you'll get bigger buildups, all that kind of stuff. So the only reason that we would have considered the white is if you were going to invest in some solar panels right away. Because that's the next part of the alternates that we're looking at. Well, who knows the future? Okay? I mean, we, we had the engineers do the work. We tried, we figured out how much more, I'll just use the word, the, one of the architects that worked on the project used to me today, beefed up the, the structure, the roof joists. Beefier, what does that mean? Well, they're heavier, they're bigger, they're thicker. So what's the difference to be able to, if we wanted to put some solar collectors up there five years, ten years from now? You know, this contractor gave us a price of two thousand dollars to get that work done. Pretty consistent, one contractor thought it should be ten thousand, but I mean, it's, it's pretty consistent value. I guess the internal team said, you know, for that amount of money, even though, you know, two thousand is a lot of money, I know that, but on the scale of this project, to enable something like that to occur one day, you know, perhaps even with another generation of all of us, why not do it? So it was included as a recommendation. The last one that we're recommending is bid alternate eight, and that's the electrical for future solar panels. And go figure, you know, you can't force anyone to write numbers on a bid form. So, you know, everybody seems to think it's between eight and nine thousand dollars, seven, seven to nine thousand dollars to do that. This particular contractor had no change to do it. So duh, we're going to do it. I mean, this isn't quite like that one addition I think I shared with you guys one time where we're expanding the cafeteria and it was a fifty thousand dollar credit. Not at all like that, actually. But, you know, we are accepting that as part of that, that work. So anyway, that rounds out the recommendations for the project. So I'm, you know, in some regards, I think that we're really being able to complete this, get the better roof warranties, get some of the functionality, get some of the convenience for the kindergarten incorporated into that. So very happy with, with the outcome of this. I think the, I, I kind of went over that first one. How do I do that again? Right here, sorry. This is the bid with all those alternates put in, the two million, three sixty-seven for this contractor. And yeah, the estimate was three point one six six. So yeah, we did do a pretty efficient, I think, consolidation of this. And I think the design team, you know, to everyone's credit here, we're getting what we need. You know, we're not getting what we want and what, what we think we need. I think that it's well-rounded design decisions. And I think the team really exhibited that. And I think we see the dividends of that in the clarity of this project and kind of the straightforward nature of it. So I hope we can get, see some results like this for this building too. But we'll see when the bids are open. So let me see if I've got another thing here. I don't think I did. Well, yeah, okay, here we are on the big timeline. So we're into August now and the bids are complete. We have received them. And tonight is our, hopefully you guys will support this recommendation and move forward with this contractor. And we can release the contracts tomorrow for the contractor to begin. Because we got a journey ahead. We'd really like to get this project opened up, middle of June, and get, so that everyone can have a nice relaxed movement over the summer.
I think great.
Relaxed in quotation marks.
Well, and when we met with Mo's, just as a, you know, pre-bid, or not pre-bid, but, you know, potential bid contractor to kind of hear a little bit more about them, some of their feedback back was that the timing of this bid was, was a really positive one. It allows some winter work and also some other aspects. So they were able to increase their number of subcontractors who were interested in it. They quite talked, they talked at that point though, and where the timeline is footings and walls and roof before we're in the midst of it all, till winter.
They said we hit it right in the sweet spot, making this project available. So, okay, I can't argue with them, you know? So we certainly did get some really good value and I'm super excited about it because it helps bridge the gap with, across some of the other challenges that I, that we may be facing. Okay?
And we're still anticipating a mid-September start. Get our kids in, get them settled, get that area blocked off for safety. And away we go.
Exactly.
And the questions are coming for Dave.
Yep.
Well, I'm excited that we got to add back in some of those things that some of the teachers felt really strongly about, especially the toilets in the kindergarten rooms, so, that's pretty huge to be able to do that.
It really is, it really is. We're getting good, yes.
Well, and some of the operable walls came about after we did the, the presentation on the last day of school showing the high school drawing, and it was the, oh.
Sure.
This would be awesome to be able to bring in, and so, it was a bit later in the plans, and yet it was able to do, and I think we took a look, it's like a nine-foot opening or around that, when we were talking, and, you know, it, anytime we can be building more collaboration and flexibility, the better off we are.
So, so we're two-for-two so far, so we've got to keep that, well, we got too lucky at letter openers right now.
Well, the, the one did break, so that's why we have a new lucky.
Okay, good.
Brenda treats it like gold.
Just keep that thing coming to the bid opener.
It's own velvet box.
No, it's always fun when it turns out like this, you know? Doesn't always turn out like this, but it, it did this time, so we're very happy.
And Dave, when you referenced the estimate, was that at the bond time estimate, or when we were anticipating that huge increase?
That's the bond time.
That is the bond time. So we were even anticipating with the, things you were seeing earlier in construction and even higher.
Because I had added about $150,000 of, I actually have the magazine in my car for this month, and it's at about 7%, so, it's cooled down from the craziness, but 7 is still a lot. And, it's just going to be really, you know, we're bidding a lot of things this year, so it's, it's fun to be able to weigh that against these. We're having some good success with the addition project, so.
Didn't you share with us one time, 13-point something?
Yeah, exactly, right. Yep, and we were planning on that, and I think that was still wise, because you can't just close your eyes and say, well, that's not for us, you know, I mean, we'll be lucky and stuff, but I mean, you got to be, we got to go in with our eyes open. So I think we're doing the same thing with the high school, we've been very considerate about that, and, yes, it's a little bigger, it's got a little more storage in the scene shop and things like that, but it's, you know, I think that's a good place to stretch as opposed to other things. So, a lot of give and take on that project, but, you know, I'm just super excited about that series of bids. Now, we, we issued that project last week, and basically, we're going to be having a pre-bid on that next week, and we're kind of in the addendum bid phase right now, and we'll open up the bids, I think, September, first week in September, I'll say.
Yeah.
It's either the Tuesday.
Seventh, I think.
Yeah.
Seventh comes to mind.
Yep, and then we'll have a board meeting after that. Hopefully, we'll all be smiling again, but you know what, if we're not, if we're not, we're all in this together, right? How's that?
I think she's right, we're going to have some really happy teachers over there.
Yeah. I've not shared with them yet, I wanted to make sure we had board approval, but I will let them know if, if in fact this approves tonight.
Molly's already got her Texas probably sent out.
Or we'll let Molly, we'll let Molly let them know.
Twitter?
Yes.
Live streaming.
I'm at the Twitter page.
Facebook Live.
Any other questions or comments for Dave, though?
All right, let's seek a motion.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion by Dan Rudd, second by Kevin Hubert, to award the contract for the TCU Lonsdale Elementary Classroom addition to Mo's construction of Oatana, Minnesota. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed, 7-0.
Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you for making the trip down.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Party was south of town, so I was already partway here, so it's really good.
All right, let's see travel back.
Yep, thank you. Enjoy the rest of the day and week.
Oh, yeah. All right, we are going to close the meeting for our superintendent evaluation, so I will seek a motion to close the meeting for the superintendent's evaluation.
So move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Dale Bus, second by Krista Gettle, to close the meeting for superintendent, superintendent evaluation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed, 7-0.